Really something that we've been anxious to do since we were given responsibility for the Library of Michigan and the Michigan Electronic Library. And I'm going to ask Carolyn, Nancy, and Deb to join us here.
Great. Hello again. We are so excited to showcase our State Library of Michigan, which is part of the Michigan Department of Education. And just kitty-corner across, Mike's been trying and trying to find money for a zip line so we don't have to go outside when we go back and forth, but can't find it in the budget.
Apparently there really is a tunnel.
There is, but we can't get that open either. You're going to have to use your superintendent influence.
That's not helping, is it?
What we'd like to do today is a couple of things. We'd like to -- everybody thinks they know what a library is, and you probably all use your local libraries, but the Library of Michigan has some unique characteristics to it because it is the state library, and it is housed in Lansing, but their tentacles reach out all over the place. And although our staff continues to shrink over there, they are small but mighty, and they do just a yeoman's job in providing services to state government and to public libraries and to school libraries. And because we are all about education, Nancy, and then particularly Deb, will reinforce some of that partnership. There's some really exciting things going on between the Hannah Building staff and the Library of Michigan staff in especially the E-Library, the electronic library, and getting resources out. So we'll start with Nancy, and she'll tell you what the library is and what it's all about. And then Deb is going to do just a really cool presentation on what the E-Library is. So I'll just turn it over to Nancy, and you might want to introduce other folks who are here from the library before we get started, so people can look at them, or they can wave, or whatever.
Sure. We have Assistant Director Cheryl Mays, our other Assistant Director Don Tadaro. I don't think made it over.
He's watching.
Right. And Randy Riley is one of our other MEL coordinators and outreach people. He and Deb Tag team met. And I'm going to talk about Carolyn Sparks in a little bit. She's our new Executive Director of our foundation. And we have our new Financial Analyst, Patrick Conlin, who some people might not like that I'm announcing that because we stole him from special ed, but we're glad to have him as part of the library. And then, of course, Deb.
Deb who? Deb Biggs-Thomas.
This is Deb.
Oh, okay.
And I do see in the back, and I know Deb will introduce Barb Fardell, but Barb Fardell is our key link here in this building to a lot of the educational technology, E-Library stuff. And so we've just got people scurrying back and forth. That zip line would really be handy. But Nancy, let's go.
Well, I'm going to stick to my notes pretty much so I can keep within the timeline and be sure to say everything I want to say, but not take too long.
You seem that we allow that really well here.
Well, I like to see the interest in this group. I'm really pleased to have the opportunity to tell you about the Library of Michigan and our programs and services today.
I will.
During the slide presentation, you'll notice that some of the things in the slides are underlined or blue, and those are live links to more information. Once the PowerPoint is posted, you can go in and look at more information on things that may be of interest to you when you have more time. The Michigan Legislature created the Library of Michigan to guarantee the people of the state and their government one perpetual institution to collect and preserve Michigan publications, conduct reference and research, and support libraries statewide. We are established under the Library of Michigan Act, Act 540 of 1982, but we have been serving Michigan and its government for 175 years as a territory and as a state since 1828. We're happily settled back now into the Department of Education since our transfer here in October of 2009, and almost all of our operations funding is from the state's general fund, with our current operations budget at $3.8 million. That funding covers the staffing and the cost of the collections. We receive additional funding and support for our programs and services via the Library of Michigan Foundation and from various grants, as well as annual federal allotments. The Institute of Museum and Library Services distributes about $5 million Library Services and Technology Act, LSTA Federal Dollars, to Michigan annually through its Grants to States program. And that money comes through the Library of Michigan. We and Michigan's library community agree that the federal dollars are best used to sustain and enhance the Michigan E-Library at MEL.org, that you'll hear more about in a few minutes. The Library of Michigan Act establishes a Board of Trustees that is advisory to the Superintendent of Public Instruction and the State Librarian. Most of the board members are appointed by the Governor, ensuring participation by those representing school, public, academic, and special libraries, the Michigan Library Association, and the general public. The Library of Michigan Foundation was established in 1985 to raise funds to support the programs and services of the Library of Michigan. We're excited to have on board now, as our new Executive Director of the Foundation, Carolyn Sparks, whom we just met. And we're really excited that we're going to be seeing some more robust fundraising and support from the Library of Michigan Foundation moving forward. So thank you, Carolyn. The programs listed are just a sampling of the kinds of things which the Foundation provides support for us for. None of those programs would be possible without that Foundation's support. Our annual Night for Notables event, celebrating the 20 notable authors for this year, will take place at the library on the evening of Saturday, May 7. And an invitation to that event is in your packet, and we'd love to see any of you who can be there, attend. It's a wonderful evening. Each of the past two years, a high school library has won one of the two citations of excellence for the annual State Librarian's Excellence Award. We encourage more schools to apply for the award this year. We were really happy to have schools applying these past couple of years.
I think Nancy's worked hard with Carol to try to really truly integrate this idea that we have K-12 and libraries packed together, and it should help even more. Having gone to the Notables, you've worked together. I think you'd really enjoy the night. I mean, the authors that are there are very interesting. I happen to have read some of the books beforehand, and when you meet the real author stories, it's just fantastic.
Well, and I should thank Randy Riley. He does most of the work on getting that program put together, so we couldn't do that without him or without the support of the Foundation.
Thank you.
The Michigan documents and the state law library collections contain the published record of the state's government and the life of its people. They are the collections into which we put most of our funding, staffing, time, and State government employees can visit in person or contact us by phone or email. I want you to note that the phone number on there is a typo on my part, and it should be a 517 area code if you want to call the library. I don't know if the person you get at 515 will know the answer to your question, but I know our staff will have a better answer. Please note that that's 517-373-1300. Our experienced reference staff will research simple or in-depth policy and topical questions and deliver the answers, usually within a day, to the state government employees.
Can you look at that local control thing before they do that?
We could go into that. All inquiries are treated confidentially and are addressed in a nonpartisan manner. And we are here to help state government run more efficiently and more effectively, and we're working to get the word out so everybody in state government understands that we are here for them. If they provide us with a question, we'll do the work. While the public is no longer our major focus, we maintain regular public hours, Monday through Friday. Our holdings are included in our online catalog answer, and our reference staff are present during open hours on all the floors where the collections are housed. We encourage anybody who's interested to visit during those hours of 10 to 5 on Monday through Friday. Since the 1977 State Aid to Public Libraries Act charges us with the distribution of state aid funds to public libraries, the Library of Michigan is heavily involved in certification and training for public libraries and their staff. And Cheryl is the person who heads up the staff that does that, and they are very busy and do a terrific job. The funds are annually appropriated to the Library of Michigan from the state's general fund and are distributed by a per capita formula. As a result of that per capita formula, we track the populations served by each library and keep tabs on what libraries are dissolving and which ones are being established. The population figures are also used for our reporting to county treasurers about what public libraries in each county receive local penal fines from their county treasurer per the Penal Fines to Public Libraries Act of 1964.
Before you go on, can I just show Marty?
State aid to public libraries is only a small portion of the funding that sustains public libraries in Michigan. The bulk of their operating budgets are funded locally by the penal fines just mentioned and by municipality appropriations, property tax millages, and privately raised dollars. State investment in public libraries makes sense because public libraries contribute to the success of Michigan residents in many essential ways. They provide broadband internet connectivity and public computing stations that help level the playing fields for those residents who cannot afford computers or robust connectivity packages at home. With so many Michigan residents seeking to apply for unemployment, seeking new jobs, retooling their careers, updating their resumes, or developing their own businesses, the resources and expertise available at the public libraries in Michigan are invaluable. Many state libraries work with public libraries only, and we think it's great that in Michigan, the state library is charged by our Establishment Act to serve libraries of all types. Our service to school libraries is one avenue by which we help to foster success in meeting the state's newly stated goals of ensuring that third graders meet reading proficiency expectations and that K-12 students come through the system career and college ready.
Can I?
Mike?
I just thought this might be an example where I would show my own fault for not recognizing that easily. It's where we have a lot to do with system work, and I think we should be proud of it as a board, as a department. But here's an example where we were sitting in the Runkel Room and struggling with this co-owning with local districts the third grade reading proficiency. You know, what can we do to help impact that? How do we support districts, blah, blah, blah? And I mean, it really, at least I'm inventing this for myself, it wasn't until we're going through it more and more and looking up and looking across the street, and there's a library, and we're going, "Ah, hello." It's just, it's part of what, well-intentioned, but why system reform is important. And at first, I thought this was somewhat ceremonial to bring the library back. We're happy to have it back, but I didn't really make -- and that was the first real concrete example where we realized, talk about co-owning and helping support local communities to get kids reading. You can't just do it starting at kindergarten. So the library is now onboard through Nancy's leadership with local libraries to help us get to that point before they ever get there. It's really been a nice time.
The Library of Michigan is the state's member in the Collaborative Summer Library Program, a national program which develops the national themes for each year's summer reading programs. It also produces programming and collateral materials that libraries all over the country use in creating their local summer reading activities. The Library of Michigan distributes the program manuals to nearly 400 public libraries in Michigan each year. Survey numbers are really unreliable because only a limited percentage of the libraries that hold summer reading activities respond to our annual survey, but even the minimal numbers that we have show the program's wide reach. Keeping kids reading during the summer certainly helps them to retain their reading skills through the start of the next school year. And I'd love to work on being able to get some hard facts and numbers for that. We know it's true, but, you know, verifying it with actual numbers is going to be a challenge for us.
Can you just explain to me a little bit more what a reading manual, what this manual that you're providing, what is it?
Well, the summer, the National Collaborative determines the theme, you know, like water and space or something like that. And then the local libraries develop local programming for the kids in their area or the teens in their area. And the programming manuals that get created through this collaborative have a lot of programming ideas and materials that make it easy for the public library staff all over the country to pick up on that theme and do programming really out of the box and very easily, so it encourages people to actually use that theme and do summer reading in their local public libraries.
Perfect.
Thank you. Let's see, where am I? The Library of Michigan initiated the One State, One Children's Book Program, Michigan Reads, in 2004. Now, there's a great local.
Yeah.
Not to be confused with the more recently started program of the same name by the MEA, our Michigan Reads program focuses on getting parents and caregivers to read to children from birth through second grade, sort of a younger focus than that other program. We feature a picture book by a Michigan or Great Lakes author and engage children, parents, and teachers, everyone, in reading the book aloud, especially during the months of September and October. To encourage wide participation in the program currently sponsored by Target Corporation, we annually distribute nearly 5,000 kits, and those kits include copies of the book, programming guides, just like the ones for summer reading, but focused on the highlighted book for this year, posters and stickers to every Michigan public library, Great Start Readiness and Head Start Program, and every public school serving K through second grade. Michigan Reads has become one of our signature programs in these past seven years, and this year's highlighted book for September and October of 2011 will be Detroit author Devon Skilian's Memoirs of a Bold Fish, and this is a fun book to read. Anyone of any age will just really enjoy this book.
Is that Channel 4 back?
Yes.
Has he?
The book is fabulous, just fabulous.
We're excited about it. We let the schools and the libraries know what the, public libraries know what the book is for the year, but we aren't rolling out a public press release about it yet because we want to sort of have that happen in August to get the program really rolling in September and October.
Oh, so this is for next school year?
For the start of the next school year, yep. As part of our ongoing collaboration with school library professionals in the state, the Library of Michigan is proud to have helped to facilitate the development of school libraries in the 21st century, SL21 is what we call it. In 2010, the Library of Michigan Board of Trustees endorsed these 21 benchmarks designed to measure the quality of school library media center programs in our schools. The benchmarks shine a light on what outcomes are achievable when excellent library services and staffing are in place in K-12 schools. The program is still quite new, but we've already recognized over two dozen school libraries as providing either qualified or exemplary library service. So we're really excited about this program. It's really getting rolling, and people are really picking up on it out around the state. This slide just is a sampling of some of the other services and programming we provide to all types of libraries, public and school, and also academic and special libraries. You can find more information about these and our other programs at our website, which will be included in the contact information at the end of the presentation. Now, on to the Michigan E-Library. This flagship program of the Library of Michigan is probably the most valued statewide asset of the Michigan library community. Conceived and developed in collaboration with libraries of all types statewide, MEL is the anytime, anywhere, online resource for all Michigan residents. Our expenditure of $5 million federal dollars each year on MEL saves Michigan's libraries at least $72 million annually. The information provided in MEL is reliable and vetted. Michigan residents can access hundreds of thousands of full-text commercially published articles in MEL that are not available through general search engines like Google and Yahoo. The Michigan E-Library catalog enables statewide resource sharing among over 400 libraries of all types from all corners of the state, giving Michigan residents access to over 40 million items in those 400 libraries. Any part of MEL can be valuable in the K-12 arena, but the Michigan Online Resources for Educators is the component of MEL specifically targeted at schools. The Library of Michigan has been partnering, as Carol mentioned, with the department's Educational Technology Office since Moore's inception. And Barb Fardell, who's back there, Barb's our partner in this. Barb secured the funding, the grant from Verizon to purchase the 60,000 Thinkfinity online resources that are currently in Moore, and she has really coordinated the alignment of those online resources with Michigan's curriculum standards. They're directly aligned with those standards. Through the MEL-Michigan portal, one does not need to travel to see the growing number of digitized Michigan history-revated primary materials from libraries all around the state. It just takes a click of the mouse. Imagine what a resource, these online offerings, and printed materials from all over the state can be for a school whose library is engaged in the MEL program. So to give you a live look at MEL and how to navigate it, I'm going to turn it over to Deb Biggs-Thomas, our MEL coordinator, one of our MEL coordinators.
I'm going to go live?
Well, I hope so.
Yep. There we are.
I'm delighted to be with you here this morning to showcase what a great resource the Michigan E-Library is for all Michigan residents, but certainly for our purposes here for teachers, students, and parents. This is the website. It's very easy to remember. The URL is MEL.org. And I'm going to take you through the main components of the E-Library this morning, the first of which is our databases. We pay the lion's share of our federal funding for the databases, and we work currently with seven vendors. Many of these are providing access to full-text materials from magazines, journals, and newspapers. But we also have some subject-specific resources such as the Chilton's Auto Repair manuals for those car repair buffs, and this certainly could be used in a high school situation that has automotive as part of their curriculum. We also have Heritage Quest, which is great for family history, that's right here, and genealogy. And one of my favorites, which is Learning Express Library. And I'm going to click on Learning Express because I want to show you this bit more specifically. What's going to come up now, because we're not in a library or in a school, is an authentication page. And our vendors require that we authenticate because we're just providing these resources to Michigan residents, not everybody on the planet. If however you are in a school or a library, those places will have dedicated IP addresses and will take you immediately to the resource that you're interested in. So I'm going to put in.
And this driver's license authentication is not retained in any way, or it doesn't stay in anybody's record, and it doesn't retain your driver's license number, so it's not any kind of privacy threat.
It is. It's just an algorithm that we use to ensure that you're coming in from Michigan. You can also put in your MELCAT library card if your library participates in MELCAT. This is Learning Express Library, and what it does is provide skills building in terms of test and tutorials, starting in the elementary grades all the way through high school. So as you progress through, you can see that they're highlighting core areas such as math and reading skills and reading in elementary, math, reading, writing in the middle school and high school entrance exam prep, and then when you get into high school, sorry, there's an error up here. All right, let's just go back, see if that works. This way. There it is. And you can pick up even more skills building and test and tutorials in those particular, that particular learning center. But what I really want to highlight is our college preparation section, and this is where students can actually take the ACT prep. Now, these resources are available at no cost to Michigan residents, and so their parents don't necessarily have to spend extra dollars to send them to test prep class. They can come to MEL through the press and actually take the test. So ACT, English, math, reading, science, writing, and just prep courses in general.
On these tutorials, elementary through high school, do they have any kind of way of holding data in terms of where I started, how I'm doing currently, would I, you know, have I advanced to the next level? Is that kind of, is it that robust, or?
It can be. You would have, the school would have to add that on on their own, but it doesn't, it's not provided in what we're pushing out statewide. But the company does provide that as an add-on to what we're providing.
For cost, or?
Yeah, for cost.
But there is a way that the student can log in and take a test and then go back and have, in the middle of the test.
Yeah, but tests are scored, there are times. Yeah, it'll tell you why your answer was correct or incorrect.
I was just trying to figure out if I was, I was thinking if I was a classroom teacher and wanted to use this with my kids, then what kind of pre-test, or what kind, how would I know where to start with each child, I guess is what I was trying to ascertain. Is there anything that helps with that, or is it just, well, let's give it a shot on this test, and if you don't do well, then we'll go back to the next one, or?
Or you can take it again, you know, to improve your score.
Just a thought, though, Nancy, when you, your question is a good one, if a teacher wants to use it in the classroom and retain the data and then move on. One of the things that's proposed in the executive recommendation budget is another $950,000 for MEL. So if it goes through, we might want to look at the cost of doing something like that. I don't know if it would be cost prohibitive statewide.
I don't either. I was just curious as to how that, you know, how robust this was, if it was, and not that it has to be an answer to everything, I was just wondering what it would.
But it might be something we can.
It's my understanding that the company can provide that higher functionality.
Okay.
In what way?
Yeah, thanks.
How does the word get out to the public that this is available for kids to take the ACT?
We're hoping you'll help us with that. I said, "We're hoping you'll help us with that." You know, MEL, everything in MEL is kind of the best kept secret in Michigan, and we're excited.
Right. It sounds absolutely great.
Well, we've gotten this stuff before. I mean, I have your bookmarks that we've gotten as board members before, and what I didn't realize until I saw this, just how in-depth it was. And that's my fault for not checking it out, so.
One of the things that we've just done is had a really good meeting with the communications staff on marketing, marketing the library, its services, and MEL in particular. So you'll see more. Nancy and her team are developing a communications plan with Marty and his staff, so we're very excited about that.
And Deb gets out every week.
We have a newsletter line, too, on our emails.
Yes.
Yeah. Do we have an icon that they can click on?
No, no, nevermind.
Marty's working on it. Everybody wants to stay tuned.
Yeah, I mean, I have been doing education conferences. Actually, Barb and I have been out on the education circuit for the past two years, getting the word out through presentations and exhibit, exhibit booths. In fact, we're going to be at the Governor's Summit. Randy and I will be at the Governor's Summit on education at the end of the month, and working through the professional organizations, which is the MEA and the SEC, and we were just at the Michigan Parent Teacher Association Conference, just Saturday exhibiting, and, you know, so we are out there trying to get the word out as best we can. And we also have our libraries, our library partners around the state, our publics, our K-12s, and our academic libraries pushing out the resources. Because what they will do is they'll tap into MEL resources into their own online presence, and so you may be using a MEL resource, but you may not know it. But we're working on branding as well. And so we're sort of a collaborative effort in that regard. The word of MEL cannot discount.
No. And, you know, selfishly, when I think, when I see this, I get so excited because what I think about is after-school programs. Because a lot of after-school programs need to have those academic resources, but don't have the resources themselves to go out and develop or to pay for or anything. This is phenomenal.
Well, and you'll see more when we get to the Michigan Online Resource Centers for Educators.
The opportunity for you to go is the After School Network.
Yeah, that's a great idea. It helps to get the information on that.
Yes, I'll give it to you.
Thank you.
One of the things that our board members can do, because you're always out in the community and visiting the schools, is check out the district library, or, you know, ask them if they're using MEL and help get the word out that way.
You know, this was a question I had early on. What kinds of limitations do you find with districts that are in a place where they don't have the broadband access that most people have? Do you have large numbers of those, or is it becoming smaller, or?
Well, it's becoming smaller, but, you know, that's a concern because the resources in all the components of MEL are becoming more and more robust, and that becomes an issue. That's why one of the things that public libraries and state libraries are all about is trying
is trying to push the broadband effort. And Cheryl's been involved in that nationally and statewide here, too.
That's great.
I think we'll take you to Moore real quick. We've talked about it a lot. There's so much more that we could go into with Deb here. It's just been fascinating to learn more about Mel, but I think we want to get more...
I think you'd really enjoy just getting on it and navigating it yourself.
Okay, this is the Moore Portal, which is the Michigan Online Resources for Educators. We stepped out on this project in 2007 as a collaborative effort between the library, the Department of Ed, which we were not a part of at that point, through Barb Bardell, and also colleagues at Wayne State University. And what we did was took the resources that were languishing in the Michigan Teacher Network and put them into, which you may, I'm seeing Nancy nodding her head there, which Barb brought teachers together to align in a, I believe it was a summer workshop. And that was the genesis of the portal. Since then, we've added nearly 60,000 resources from the Verizon Foundation, thinkfinity.org, which Barb was instrumental in bringing on. And also got some money from Verizon to do tech training on these resources. The portal just got redesigned through the efforts of our portal manager, Karen Harston, and so it has a very nice, you know, 2.0-ish sort of look, which we're very proud of. And the search mechanisms are right front and center here. So I'm going to click on the search flicks and hiskeys, and this indicates that you can search by content expectation. We have loaded all of the variety of expectations into this particular section, including the common core, which the resources will be aligned to in due course. I'm going to show you as an example the Math K8. So you just click on the one you're interested in, and then you just drill down through the expectations until you see the content expectation come up. Next to it, you might see a number and an icon. If you click on that, it's going to bring up a new window which lists all of the resources that are aligned to that particular content expectation. You can go directly to that resource by clicking on its title, or you can click on the More Details link to get the full explanation of that resource and any other content expectations that it's aligned to. Now, the portal has even more functionality if you create a free login. And so I'm going to log in.
While you're logging in, I just wanted to mention, I see Linda, I see Lois, other associations, particularly the teacher associations. If you could help with, through some of your publications, with this resource for teachers would be great.
I just went into, because that's the way my mind works, I just went into the resources area for best practices. And I'm finding MichiganPublicSchools.org, which is the NEA. So one of the things that I would say to the department would be to have this new information that we just had, this presentation this morning, both on budgeting on districts and also on schools that have been the odds, to put it in this area, on best practices.
It'd be a great place for it.
Sorry, I cheated. Oh, you got mine?
No, we're good.
We're good, okay.
I'm just going to go back and click on that K8.
That's a true partnership, when you've got login partners here.
And you said you could log in with your driver's license?
That's what I did.
No, not on this, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
That's what I did, just while she was giving the presentation, I logged in using my driver's license.
Oh, really?
Into the databases?
Yeah.
How about this one?
This one, you just create your free, you know, you just create a login, whatever you like, you know, your name, a password.
This is to create your own account?
Yeah, this is like, create your own account. It's a free part of the portal. So, yeah.
The reason that we ask teachers to create a login is so that we have a way to reach the teachers, because there really is no way in this state right now to get information out to teachers to let them know about the events, the alignment workshops, things of that nature. So we created the login with good stuff behind it as a bribe to hopefully get them to sign up login. But they don't have to, they can still get a free.
But we're also hoping to align a lot of those tens of thousands of resources that are in the commercially owned Mel databases going on into the future and get those aligned with curriculum also, so that through the Moore Portal, you might click in and get, I think there are some Gail resources in here. And if you hit, if you hit one of those and you weren't in a library or a school, you might hit that authentication page for something that came up through one of those databases.
And you say all of these resources are all vetted, et cetera?
Yep.
Thinkfinity works with excellent content partners such as the Smithsonian, Art Illuminations, you know, they're just excellent resources that...
You know, as you know, when you have children that go in and want to get resources for their reports, one of the biggest challenges we have is to try and help them understand what's authentic, what isn't. What is, what is true, what is folklore, what is, you know...
What your next-door neighbor's kid wrote as a...
Exactly. Because it's online, their theory is, it's online, it must be right.
And this is the way, and using any of the Mel resources, which are all vetted, even the websites that we include in our gateways, our subject specialists look at the criteria of authenticity, authority, accuracy, and currency before they'll even put that website in. Thank you. But back to the...
Quick question, do you have an app for the Kindle or other evil?
We are working on that as we speak. We are working on an app.
I'll be looking for it.
Everything costs money, so...
Yeah, no, your answer's, we're only talking money.
Yeah. But I think it'd be very valuable.
Why doesn't that give you a grant?
There's an idea.
There's so much more we can do.
But back to the record here, and I can show you that now that we've logged in, we have even more functionality in that we can add a comment to this particular resource. Say I'm using it for my fourth graders, and I found that, you know, just didn't work so well. I think maybe an older age group would be more appropriate for this. And so if teachers are sharing this with each other, the more they respond to the comment section, we can see what resources are working and what are not, and can make some changes accordingly. You can also share these resources through many social networking utilities, which you see come up on here, there's like about 8,000 of them. And then also report broken links, because that does happen. And we could also add this to our, I can add this to my resource locker. Now, the resource locker is found up here in the Tools section. And what this is, is just allowing you to store those resources or websites that are within the Moore Portal that you find are working for you in your classroom, and so that you can get them right away. The other thing we have in the portal is the Lesson Plan Builder, which I think is just fabulous. And it's especially nice for new teachers or pre-service teachers, and we've certainly been pushing out the message of the Moore Portal to academics in terms of the students that they're working with. And Barb has a couple saved in her Lesson Plan Builder, and you can see, it takes you through step by step as you build the lesson. So it's, you know, it's very user-friendly in that regard. You can save it, and you can also print it out to show to your principal. There's also a Collaboration Center in Moore, and we use the edweb.net community for this. And there's a lot of other, I don't know if you've looked at edweb.net, but Mark, you're nodding your head that you've used it, and it's got great user community speaking to different aspects of K-12 needs. And Moore is also present in edweb.net, and it's a great way to upload documents, collaborate with your colleagues, share information, et cetera. So we've got a presence on that as well. And we also have professional development in the Moore Portal. This is information on our Thinkfinity trainers, which through our grant with the Verizon Foundation, we've been able to train the trainers around the state, and so they're a great resource for working to get that tech piece out. And then we also have a new online training available. And this is, Karen Harston worked very hard on this, and it's an online course, Using Moore with Technology Integration Training. And you can just launch this course by clicking on that.
It's free?
And that's free.
This is all available anywhere that there's an internet connectivity?
Anywhere in the world, actually.
Right, at your public library, for the after-school kind of use, or the parents at home, or...
Yeah, the nice thing about the portal is it's built on open-source software, so there's no licensing fees. We'll have it forever, however forever long it is, but there should be no reason why we would ever lose the portal. And it's, isn't so nice because it is hosted on the Mel server, so the costs are very minimal to be able to offer this.
And having it as one of the components of Mel overall is great, too, because as I said earlier, the other components of Mel are also very useful in the K-12 arena with the Melcat resource sharing.
It's such a nice package.
The database and everything. So they all complement one another.
One-stop shop for teachers.
It certainly can be looked at that way. I'm going to quickly go back, because I know time is limited, but I just wanted to show you the last main component of the Michigan E-Library, and that's our digital Michigan History Collection. As you, I'm sure, all know, Michigan history is taught in the third and fourth grade. It can be used as, it can be taught as an elective in high school and certainly a case study in American history. And using the collections in Michigana, teachers can introduce their students to working with primary resources. So we're talking diaries, photographs, oral histories, math. And we're linking to collections around the state that have been digitized by libraries, historical societies, museums, et cetera. And it's just a rich treasure trove of what has made our state great. We have also built out a, with Gail Sengage, one of our vendors, Michigana Sources in U.S. History Online, which hopefully will come up here. And this is a terrific resource because it details through contextual essays all the phases of Michigan history, down at the bottom of the screen, and have primary resources linked to those phases of Michigan history. Plus, at the end, there's an essay on using primary resources in the classroom if a teacher is not familiar with how to go about doing that. So there's so much more I could show you, obviously. Particularly our gateways, which we have built out for kids and teens as well as other ones, but it's...
I'm going to leave that to you to explore on your own in the interest of time.
I take your place.
Thank you.
So I'm just blown away. This is so amazing to me. And, you know, and I just wanted to share just a couple of thoughts that are coming to me as I'm watching this presentation. You know, we're sort of in a state of emergency in the sense that, you know, we like the resources, and we also want to apply these standards and make sure that they're kept. And in a state of emergency, I think sometimes things have to be done a little bit differently and being looked at differently. And one of the presentations that we've just heard was how teacher training and teacher, making teachers become more experts throughout their tenure is so important. And something like this is not something that you sit at the computer and just do on your own. It's not something that you do in your summertime and just kind of tinker around and do it on your own. And it's something that you need uninterrupted time with your colleagues together, collaborating together. And, you know, emergency procedure, what are the thought of, you know, allowing more of this time for teachers during the school year to do this? And that, you know, advertisement wouldn't have to be such a big issue if, you know, we had uninterrupted time to sit with our own colleagues and look at your resource and figure out, you know, and I'm picturing just papers all over the walls and, you know, and picturing how we could use this to better our education for our students. Yeah, but thank you, this is very inspiring.
So as you can see, that our goal is to make it something that everybody knows about all parts of Mel, and we would love every teacher in all of the districts to know what a resource Moore is, because I know lots of people are using it, but I think that there are still a lot of people who aren't. And so we need to get the word out. And the last slide is just in your packet, you'll see is our contact information. And if you want more information about Mel itself, contact Deb, and she and Randy can come out and about and talk to associations or groups of people. And my contact information is up there, and our website is in there as well.
John, I just want to say thank you, and we all need to help and will in sharing what you all can do and the power of it. I mean, just the few illustrations that you gave us about the education improvement and learning resources that you all constitute are pretty fantastic. And I think my son was taking one of your ACT prep courses, so I'll make sure he's using that. I am, I am, this is, too, an illustration of the power of libraries and librarians in today's society. And, you know, we're in this information age, and I've seen some popular reporting about how librarians are like the coolest profession, and libraries and information management is the coolest field, because, you know, this is what you all do. We're in an information age, and navigating that information and figuring out how to make sense of it and use it and find it is what it's all about. And so in addition to this incredible resource, you know, that you all represent, you know, our public libraries, which you work closely with, and our school libraries are such a fantastic contributor to the quality of life and place. I mean, we're in Ann Arbor, Alina and I, and that public library is like the happening place in town, where people go for all sorts of things. And so I also know, you know, our university's leadership in digitizing all the world's information with Google is making us the center in Michigan of how do we manage and access all the world's information, which has huge economic impact.
Give them point 10.
It's great to see this affirmative, detailed, and upbeat work going on with whatever budget constraints we're under to not only not diminish, but exploit better and grow more the information resources that we have in Michigan. So thank you very, very much, and we will do everything we can to help everybody learn and access this. Because it's huge economic power, it's huge empowerment of individuals, and it's huge community-building power represented in the resource. Plus, my wife is a librarian.
She works at the Clemens, the archive library at Ann Arbor.
Oh, I worked at the Clemens, too.
You know, another, like, one of the coolest places in the world with all these incredible documents.
I'm sorry, I have one quote of the Johns extolling libraries in Ann Arbor. It's so powerful for us in Ann Arbor that they built a parking structure underground next to it, and they're talking about putting a convention center attached to the library. Now, there's a way to recognize the importance of education.
That's it. That's great.
Pass, please.
This is great. This was really a fantastic presentation. It was wonderful, and it's great to know all this. I've known about libraries, obviously, forever, but I didn't know all the background laws and everything. But I wanted to ask some questions, because I've gotten some contacts from librarians. And you were talking about the library in Ann Arbor being such a hub. It pained me when I read that the Troy library was closing.
It is.
And some of these librarians have contacted me, and they talked about certification requirements for state aid, and the number of hours they have to stay open in order to qualify for state aid. And I wondered if the requirements, if there's a waiver process or something that if you have, you know, reduced the number of hours to qualify for state aid, maybe the Troy library could have stayed open.
Well, that wasn't the problem with Troy, but we do have a waiver process in place for other libraries that contact you. And, you know, we're trying to keep library service as robust as possible with those requirements. But we do offer a lot of waivers every year, and as I said, state aid is sort of the minimal thing that's keeping those local libraries going. Unfortunately, in Troy, it's an example of, people think the library is free because it's free to walk in and use, and like Mel is free because you don't have to pay to use it, but it's not free.
It's not free because somebody...
And the communities who value their libraries and recognize that it actually costs money to have that walk-in service or online immediate gratification service does cost money, and the state tries to subsidize it to a certain extent, especially as far as helping the local libraries and the school libraries and the academic libraries, you know, access those statewide resources. But the local, actual local library funding is that, the local control, the local funding.
Right. But I tried to read some of the law. But I, I tried to read some of the law, authorizing it, and certain sized libraries have to be open 50 hours a week or 55 hours a week, depending on their size.
We, we have that because if a, a Class 6 is the largest size of a public library and it serves 50,000 or more people, all the way up to the 750,000 that Detroit serves. And so that's where we think if, if your library's serving that many people, you need to be open, or else you're not providing the service that the people need.
But on the other hand, if they could be open like 40 hours a week.
Right.
Instead of 50, they might be able to save some money and still qualify for state aid if they can get a waiver.
Well, and we look at, you know, okay, in the tough times, you're having problems with this, we provide waivers and we ask the libraries to show, demonstrate how they're going to try to meet the requirements in the coming year. So, yeah, it's a process. But we try to be flexible, but we also don't want to set the bar low enough that.
You don't want to set it too low.
Right.
Want to make it workable.
Right. So we worked for a couple of years reviewing all that and trying to establish the best needs to require.
Maybe just for perspective, the state aid would be about, for Troy, what percentage of their?
I don't have the numbers for Troy, but for the, most of the libraries around the state, 1 to 5% of their operating costs are state aid. So it's not very much.
So you can see, it's really not the essential piece to.
The highest percentage of, the library with the highest percentage of its operating income is 12%, and I think that's in Albion. But that jumps way down after that.
Of course, your local district about.
Exactly.
But I, I understand the state aid has been cut like 70% since 2000.
Yeah, but still 70% of 1% isn't what's going to keep, isn't what's going to keep the library open or closed.
Okay, thanks for the information.
Sure, and I'm happy to talk to you about it more.
And I wanted to tell you, the Detroit, you know, the Michigan Reads Program?
Yes.
The Detroit Reads Program is, you know, they're reading the Modern Life of Herriette Lacks.
Ah.
And they had a program at the Detroit, at the main library, which my husband and I went to, and we couldn't get in. It was so crowded. There must have been 200 people milling around outside the auditorium.
What a great problem you had.
To get in, the place was packed.
That's great.
It was really great. We were so excited, we were sorry we couldn't get in, but we were so excited to see all the people there, just roaming around the library, because they, oh, and they were selling the book like crazy.
I mean, as a kid growing up in New York before borders and Barnes and Noble and online stuff, I mean, the library was it.
Oh, yeah.
Where you, and it still is, can be the centerpiece of a community. And I think this goes a long way to doing that. John, we're going to get that little tape of your portion there for when you're in trouble with your wife.
[laughter]
Deb and Barb, thanks for your long time work on this too. Nancy, Carol. Why don't I suggest we, it's 12:30, so we'll eat and need a break, something, need a break. And can we, you want to do 1:15 or you want to try 1:15? 1:15, ladies and gentlemen, we'll come back. And then.